Good evening. Welcome to the Providence City. Are we the city council? That's a great start, yes. I've been, I've been gone on vacation for a while. And we appreciate all of your attending. We'd love to see the room this full, but we know that we don't always have this many people here. So, thank you for coming. And we have Jeff Nebiker. Just by way, I'm, I'm the mayor Kathleen Alder. We have Jeff Nebiker, we have Brett Speth, we have Janelle Seeley, Kerry Kirk, and Josh Paulson, who are the council members here tonight. We appreciate their work on all of the city's behalf. It's not an easy job. You just see us when we're sitting up here, but you don't see all the reading that we have to do and all the things that we go through. So, welcome to everyone. I've asked Brett Speth if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So if you would all please stand and face the flag. Every time I say that, I, I think about how blessed you are to be in this country. If you've ever been to another country and had an opportunity to travel, it's beautiful, they're beautiful, but it's so nice to come home to, to the United States. I've asked Kerry Kirk if she would give us an opening prayer to get us started. Our eternal Father in heaven, we bow our heads and we express gratitude for this beautiful and free country that we live in. We're grateful to live in this peaceful valley and in the city of Providence. We're grateful for the health and strength that allows us to be here. We're grateful for the opportunities that we have to serve and we're grateful for the youth of our community who are with us tonight. We pray that we might be guided by thy Spirit, that we can make decisions that will be in the best interest of, of the citizens of this great city. And we pray that we might be mindful of, of the needs of, of the citizens. And this prayer is offered in the name of our Savior Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you. Okay. We are at the point that we have our council reports. When we have lots of people here, we like, we like all of you to hear what we've been doing. So, we'll start with Josh.
Thank you. Not a lot for me today. I did have some citizen conversations. I just want to pass along to the city and just other people for, I heard from a few people about vineyard, the netting on the planning commission general last week, it was last week, yeah, last week. And thank the planning commission for taking that up. I generally just have heard from residents that they're actually okay with what's being proposed, or those that they've talked to me. So people feel differently. I'm not going to go for them too, but that's, that's kind of what I've, the tone I've been getting from some, from residents.
And visionary has gone out of their way.
Yeah.
To help people understand what, what is on the docket now. So.
Yeah. The other one, and Ryan, just to let you know, I think we, I think we may have a bit of a communication gap as it relates to fiber installation going into certain neighborhoods. It's, it's taking a while to put those in. And, and we've heard from some residents who are a little frustrated by that, in that they just, there's no communication that's happening, or how long it will take. It tends to kind of interfere with their, with their travel a little bit. We've had some creative use too, that it used the cones in funny ways, putting it around. So, more importantly though, I think we just want to communicate to the company and say, I think we need to notice to residents that it's happening and how long it's happening. And the complaint doesn't seem to be over. That it's occurring, other than that they just don't seem to know what's going on with the installation.
I think one of the complaints that we have gotten, and just so you could pass along, flags that are going in, don't have to stay in, they are optional. They're optional and they can always be removed. So the paint is what we're usually going off of. It will go in as a, as a planning item, but then the white line comes, you'll see, supposed to have a letter that goes out before any construction starts, to give an advance notice. Some of those letters have been delayed because some being done by subcontractor versus a, the prime, there's, they have had some that they're working on fixing that. So, but yeah.
Maybe today, I just want to say it was really awesome. Just in person, I, I really enjoyed attending. So you'll probably hear that from everybody up here today. That's all I got.
Great, thank you. Welcome to the youth council. We've started our new youth council year and they're here tonight for the swearing in and that will happen shortly. We're glad you're here and that you get to see what a city council meeting looks like. You're welcome to leave after you're sworn in, but you're also welcome to stay as long as you choose. It's not rude to get up and leave a city council meeting. That's what people do. But you're also welcome to stay and listen to the, the things that we talk about and the decisions that we make. You'll notice that the city council makes decisions that, that affect your everyday life. So I've been working with them and we have our year planned out. Last Friday was the last concert in the park and I, I feel that those concert in the park resources might be better used toward the city celebration. And so unless there's a citizen who wants to take on planning the concerts in the park, I'm going to let that go by the wayside and focus on the city celebration and then, and the Christmas tree lighting and the Easter egg hunt. And so I feel like we've got some good momentum with those things. Yeah. And, and I love the city celebration as well. Thank you. I'm excited to hear your report.
You've been one of our board members on the block for your station company Earl Lenhart Hospital H. September 7. So we just appreciated the service on the board and he did a great job as our treasurer. So we're looking for new members for our board. congregation company, the school board, they decided at their board meeting on the August, they decided to postpone the bond that they were proposing to build transform Spring Creek into an elementary school and to get a new middle school built in the Nibley area for this end of the valley and a few other places around the valley. But they've decided to wait till next year to propose their bond. Went to LPC, we're just like policy committee meeting in Salt Lake. And they did a lot of discussion on some housing issues. And we've had two coalition meetings for our help these cities committees. So that's moving along, doing well. The county general plan is still under review. They were going to adopt it, but then they changed their agenda last week. So probably in October, I think we'll have the final revision, adoption. And as far as resident communication, I had several emails about speeding on Spring Creek Parkway. And we've added some flags to those crosswalks and made some improvements there. Sheet staff support with that. And I've had some questions about green space maintenance and our ABU ordinance. And I have talked to a lot of people about them. And sourcrows. Our committee was fantastic. And it just was an incredible thing to see so much of the community now and gather. It was great.
I'd like to report that the water situation with Providence and Spring Creek. As we met on the board, this last week, we felt like it's been very effective. And we're always looking at ways to increase the amount of water that we can get to the city without affecting the areas that this year's been. For the first trial year, we felt like it was a good program and that the city did save, save quite a bit of money and pumping costs because of the water being taken out of the spring of the canyon. The second thing I'd like to report on is the emergency management. We have now got out, due to the great help of Ryan and the staff, we have got out over 2,000 brochures into the air, into line to be distributed throughout the community as well as those. We have, as well as I've met with a group called the Southwest emergency planners, you might say. And we met on a Sunday evening and they had a very nice program and were able to present to them what the city is doing and be able to hand out, we handed out about 100 brochures at that meeting. And so this has been received quite well, quite very positive. And we hope that now through the distribution system, we can get more of these brochures into the homes. We're also waiting on some fridge magnets. I don't think they have come in yet to be able to get more, more brochures out into the south end of Providence. Also, I would like to report that there's an emergency management conference at 15th and 16th at the Davis Conference Center in Lake Utah. And if you have an interest in involvement in emergency management for our community or for themselves, certainly invited to attend that conference. I unfortunately was in Oregon during the sauerkraut celebration, but I heard it was very good. People enjoyed it. A lot of positive feedback that I have heard. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
So I was able to attend the planning and zoning meeting this past week because we had one officially. And just from citizens, I've heard the same thing. They're looking like visionary is headed in a great direction with downsizing from what they originally had planned down to 75. In the meeting, the planning and zoning commission did recommend that we think about the wording as far as legally kind of binding them to a certain number of homes. So I don't know how that is arranged or the wording, but just to be thinking about that, that's kind of what planning mission has recommended that we, even though we zone it a certain way, that it also will have other stipulations, things in agreement with visionary. Anyway. I left after that part, so I'm not sure what happened next. But just a few comments from citizens that I've heard. I guess I, I would be wondering too, on the Spring Creek Parkway, where it comes down from the mountain past Sarah Street, there's comments about the city property there on the corner. There's people wondering what the planners for city property, the, the pit of weeds or, you know, I just, yeah, I don't, do we maintain those? And they want to pass that along.
Some we maintain, some are maintained by the owner of the property. So I have to.
Some of the Providence City corner, the pit of weeds. Another concern they had was when you get down to 300 East, where you're crossing there, Spring Creek Parkway and 500 North. When you go past the vineyard, the street is wide, but then it narrows by the church there and there's a fence and people are about halfway out into the road before they can see if cars are coming and not coming or not. I don't know how you solve that problem, but just thought I'd pass that along and.
That some when it narrows down is because of development hasn't occurred there yet. And that will happen when development occurs.
We're working with the property owner on that to try to.
It's just a hard spot. Yeah, it's the fence and the weeds on the fence. And it's just an intersection that's going to become a lot more busy with all the development on the hill and with the second phase of the vineyards. Not the great spot to not be able to see. Not, I don't know. Turn it into a four-way stop, but. Anyway.
We're talking about this parcel right here, 5th North 30th.
So. It'll be an intersection that will need work somehow.
Some point when.
That happens when the owner develops.
When some point they develop and they put in the sidewalk and they're part of the asphalt, either one of these, when that happens, that'll push back, it'll push a park strip and then a sidewalk and those, those developments will come as that property develops. So.
And it's people crossing from the west to the east.
Probably west to east, yes. Maintaining our city properties, we have weeds out there, I guess, or what do we do with our corners of Providence city property?
Yeah, we go out and we'll, we'll take care of them at least once a year. We'll cut them down and, and so we do take care of maintenance on those. So if we have it on one, we'll.
This monitor did not go on when we turned it on.
I know. I tried. I tried and I tried, but it didn't work.
Okay. Thank you for my report. One of my goals was to have a city celebration that was well done, well received, well attended. And I think we, we were able to have that happen. Just we knocked it out of the park. Amazing. So we'll go to our next item, approval of minutes. We'll do that. And then I want to switch the swearing in. Have the sauerkraut days first because the youth council helped with the sauerkraut. And I would like the youth council to hear the report and hear what was done and be thinking about how they're going to help next year. So we'll do the minutes first. And so item number one is the approval of the minutes. I'm sure everyone's had an opportunity to go through those. So I would entertain a motion.
Like a motion that we approve the minutes of August 17th, 2022.
Okay, motion by Janelle Seeley. Second by Kerry Kirk. Any any discussion on it? Anything that you?
I had a couple of typos on line 47 and 52. It said it was $10 million bond. It was a $110 million bond. For both of those.
I did not catch that when I went through there. Okay, so that's it. Okay, with the, with the exception of making that 110 instead of just 10 million. 110 million.
That is another 100 million.
Yes. Jump change, right? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Yes, Nicole Bone was the, the co-chair along with Ashley Poole of this wonderful celebration that we had. And she's going to report to us about how it's gone. So where's yours? Oh. You know, I just went right over that. But if you have a comment for something that's on the agenda, that would be the appropriate time to do that. But let me just ask if there are any public comments for anything that is not on the agenda that's within our purview. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm so excited to hear from you.
It was mentioned about the problem with the Spring Creek Parkway. I brought this up once before about putting speed bumps and Rob said, or you know, snow removal, not feasible. What about if we reverse it and put discs? Is that possible? Just so that slow the speeders down on that, you know, you know what I'm talking about?
Cross screen.
Yeah. Just a suggestion, something that maybe, maybe could help the speeding situation down Spring Creek Parkway.
There's a lot of little pros and cons to that idea as well. So we can weigh them out and decide where they might be appropriated. But they have safety concerns themselves when it comes to speed.
So we'll take that under advisement.
All right.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I'll close that portion of the meeting. And now we'll hear from Nicole.
And welcome everyone. And I want to personally thank all of you as a city council. You all thanked me and that felt wonderful, but thank you for the support that was given from the city employees to the city council. You all attended except for that Brent Speth. I don't know. I'm teary. I know I missed your face, but anyway, we'll just make sure you help lots next year. But it was so refreshing. I mean, it was so wonderful to see. And I have all these notes and I'm rambling. So let me look at my notes here. Again, Ashley Poole was not able to make it tonight. So I'm speaking on behalf of her and I, again, I want to recap the sourkraut day celebration. I want to thank the people of Providence and all the surrounding cities and their people that came out and supported this event. As I was asking people when they were there, it wasn't just Providence residents. It was, oh, I'm from Smithville. I'm from Nibley. I'm from Logan. I mean, it was so great. And what a wonderful celebration it was to show off our city and our city celebration and the history. As successful as this year was, it's only going to get better. And there have been so many people that have reached out wanting to know how they can be involved with future city, Providence City Sourkraut Day Celebration. Everyone was there to support and lend where, where it was needed. The city staff really went above and beyond in the end. I think now moving forward with better communication and everyone realizing that this really needs to happen, we have brought back sourkraut days. A quick shout out to the sponsors between cash donations and things that were given. I think we were about 10,000, right? Ryan, it wasn't about 10 that was sponsored, people, businesses, things like that. And I want to give a shout out to Visionary Homes again. They did a wonderful job displaying what they were planning on doing and donations from Visionary Homes were excellent. And I have all of those names as well. Were there any thoughts that you guys had as what you would want to see next year or any, can I ask for that?
Sure.
Okay. That attended, was there anything that you think?
I thought it was fantastic how you highlighted the streets of the city because I think a lot of people have moved in here, myself included, that don't know the roots. And I, I just loved how you presented everything, historical tours, historical booths, films, the activities. I think the live entertainment was a hit. I think that brought in a lot of people. I did have the jump rope team that was in the parade, told me that they would be willing to come and do performance next year if you want them to. So I thought the live entertainment was great.
And I think, I mean, it started out, we started out sourkraut days week with the pickleball tournament. And from there, every night was just so fun. And I think the city, my, my favorite part probably was the historic tour. Because I just, I love that. And to see all the people that came to just walk around and be together was so awesome. It was amazing. So I like that too. I, I personally enjoyed the parade on Friday evening. How did you guys feel about that? The evening?
We needed more candy.
More candy. The city council, though, from the youth council, we thank them for the, for sharing. And so they ran out in the end too. I've given most of my feedback, but there's one thing I was thinking that I'm not sure that I've, I've talked to you about. I love that we honored Stan Checket and that was just a special touching experience. And there wasn't a dry eye. I think it might be cool to honor a citizen of the past and a citizen of the present. And you know, we honor them as like the, the leader of the parade. I can't remember what that's called. Your grand marshal. But maybe we could have some kind of ceremony, you know, a past and present kind of ceremony.
I like that. In fact, I'm glad you brought that up. The mayor and I have actually discussed that to continue that every year because it was so touching. It was so, it was, it was wonderful. So we have talked about doing that, but a citizen of the present.
That brainstorm. I've sent you my other brainstorm.
Well, I, I like, I like that. Awesome.
Nicole, my favorites were, I actually liked the walking history tour the night before was fantastic. It was really, really good. And and the guy who showed up in the car with all of his farm animals was the most amazing thing I've ever seen. That was crazy, but very interesting. And if I could offer one improvement amongst the thousand of good things, I think I mentioned this, it'd be great to get that stage closer to the, to kind of bring everything together. It was kind of like two different parties going on. So.
You know, we, at first our original thought was, okay, we're going to get the traffic on 100 North. All people will see the stage. But we totally agree.
Yeah. But, but I literally think I have one correction.
It's incredible. The one thing that we've discussed too, is making it much harder to find the cans.
Oh, yes.
Jeanette is volunteering.
They were awesome riddles.
Well, they were. Well, I, I do have to say though, after, I don't know if you guys have heard on the radio stations, but my mattress has kind of got onto that. And they've done find, find the rock. Oh yeah. I'm thinking, oh, maybe they stole our idea. But I talked to her because she's a man heart for Providence.
They could sponsor it next year. I thought it went really well. I thought it went really well. They could sponsor that. It sponsored that.
And she's darling. Anyway, she came up with all those. Oh, they caught on to her. Find the. But we want to give more people an opportunity to find.
That can thing not cut off. Let people look for it all day long.
No, we have thought about that, doing kind of a geocaching thing. And that would be fun, a fun, but then again, I don't know.
The first person gets the prize. The first person gets the prize. But then other people still sign the whis.
Don't tell people it's over.
Until it's over. Maybe a trail camera just to record people that went. Yeah, yeah, well, we'll get that one later.
Well, that's a really great idea. I know he was bitter. And he said after, he decided to go like, because there were so many groups, I mean, it really, that was a big, that was, find the can is probably one of my faves too. Um, but that's a good idea because you've had so many people coming to look for this can that was already gone. And maybe we'll have to, you know, cash it about that.
And work on it.
And the historic flavor. Well, that's true, and I think next year, the reason why it was, originally we were going to go with Frank's crowd out of Zackies, and then we got the whole local crowd made. Long story short, I, it would, it'd be great to have the actual Providence City Sour Cratz logo on them and make it more, you know.
So there are lots of things, lots of ideas that people are going to have. Yeah, between now and then.
And I think we're planning on the third weekend always in August. It's, it seemed like the best. Um, I do know that the. Top of Utah was trying to move it. There's the fourth week, so let's make sure.
They didn't, we told them.
Oh, well, they already told, okay, so.
They, they've already tried and we held firm for you.
Well, you know, it might be, but I actually think it worked out.
They may.
Yeah, and they might start us later because people complaining about the, yeah. So I, I really feel like that is the best weekend. There's nothing there. We're in between the fair and then the fourth week is Fair I City and River Heights Day. So I feel like the third week is a solid.
And even if it rains a little bit, it's still warm enough.
You know what? It was such a beautiful, and it was kind of a fluke that it rained. It, it was, but it was perfect. Yeah. Yeah, but I think if everybody's okay with the parade, we really liked the evening parade. The only, uh, problem would be is originally an error of local game, but I don't think that will ever. Oh, it could. It could, never seen it before, yeah.
It's okay, but it was short enough.
Well, and the parade is early enough that it wouldn't affect the park city game.
And that's funny you say that because some people were complaining that it was at five, but I thought it was perfect.
That was perfect. Five o'clock was good.
Good. I, I think, and we had so many people attending, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Great job. Thank you, thank you.
I just wanted to ask you, is there a place like that people can join up their interest? Yes, in fact, next month, I would love to put that as part of, I think we're going to do a few more recaps, right?
We are, we're going to put pictures of the winners.
Yes. Um, that was, that's a good idea, you know, I say we. Well, we're going to include our emails anyways on that, but starting January, I mean, we're going to be going again, twenty, twenty.
Think about how we, we'll just, we can just talk about it and see.
That's, yeah, because we've already had several people.
It looks like she's on. You can set up a covenant city, you know, it's not that it's just specifically for people who want.
We have one.
They do, yeah, they don't have to go to the sort through the emails.
Okay. Thank you so much. Um, we're excited about the celebration. We're excited about the positivity that it brought to our city and look forward to next year. Thank you. Okay. We now come to the next item, and that is the swearing in of the Providence City Youth Council. We are so excited that we've got such a large group this year. And, um, having you help us with the celebrations and the things that we're doing in the city is, is paramount. Having your involvement at a young age to see what we do in the city and, and how we can make a difference is really exciting to me. Um, Carrie, do you want to say anything before we do the swearing in?
No, let's do the swearing in first.
Okay. If we can have all the youth council come up and.
Stand all in front. You can face your parents.
I'll get to yours later.
Mayor. If they stand next to the tires, they'll show up in the YouTube on the video.
Stand behind, right in front of the council desk.
You'll get a lot of followers afterward.
I'm just trying to be on the speaker.
Okay, so raise your right hand. Okay. Do you all solemnly swear that you will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state? And that you will discharge the duties of your office with fidelity? But yes, well, everyone. Thank you. Um, being a mayor and seeing this much involvement from the youth in our city is just awesome. So, thank you. We have certificates for all of you, and so Carrie will hand those out.
Yeah, I'll just read out their names. Um, but first of all, I want to recognize two seniors. Um, they, they each, um, served for, uh, uh, one or two years. And I have written them letters of recommendation. And that's one of the things that, um, we strive toward on the city coun, or on the youth council is, you know, this mature citizenship and being involved. And, and how it can build your resume. And so for, for Annika and Madeline, I have, um, letters of recommendation for you. And then just a quick certificate, and as I read your name, you can, you can take a seat. Um, Madeline. Oh, Madeline's on tech. Abby. Thank you. Owen. Madeline Nazer. Sophia. Camden. Jesse. Olya. Sydney. Annika. Dakota. Did I get everyone? And we've got about ten others who aren't here. Um, we appreciate each of their service and how they, um, benefit the city. Thank you. As they're taking their seats, I want to read to you the mission of the youth council. And, and you can find it on the youth council page on our website. But it's to provide opportunities for youth to develop mature citizenship, leadership, a sense of personal achievement, community service, and understanding of government. So each of the activities that we plan are, uh, in alignment with that mission statement.
Okay. So we'll close that portion of the meeting and we will go now to a report. We had some citizens who came forward to, um, help us raise money to get cameras to support our crossing guards. Um, and Jeanette, I'll let you explain what they're for and, and what the outcome was. So state your name.
Move this around this way. I'm Jeanette Christensen. And, um, kind of put together a fundraiser for crossing guards that came about because I was almost hit with my five grandchildren walking to school. And one of our crossing guards was clipped on her shoulder. And as we were talking with the sheriff's department about that, they said if we had some way that we could kind of capture the license plate or if you could remember it. And I said, remember it? When you've got five kids around you, you're just trying to get them out of the way so we don't get killed, you know? And stuff, and so I, um, kind of explored the idea of purchasing some body cams. And I kind of given a brand name and Wes Ryan's heart said, don't put a cow there with the brand name already. He said, leave it open so that we can explore lots of different options with body cams. And so that's kind of how it came about with the fundraiser idea. The crossing guards came to my house, made buckets that collect money in, we made posters. Um, we had one lady whose husband developed the Venmo account, so that would make it easy for people to be able to contribute. And then we were at Sour Cratz Days with buckets. And several of our crossing guards helped and I helped. What was really exciting was that Sour Cratz Days, we collected that day a thousand fifty-seven dollars. And most of that was in ones, fives, and tens because. It was awesome because people were giving what they had. And while I'm older, some of the older, older people in their late eighties and nineties were taken out of little plastic bag their last dollar after they had participated in the fundraiser for the scouts or out of their wallets. And I thought how wonderful that they're contributing to something that their children have well outgrown over the years. So I thought it really brought in a sense of community and a sense of kind of giving them the last that they had. And that, that just touched my heart. I was really, I was really touched by that, that people would be so generous. Visionary Homes contributed a thousand dollars. We had a previous mayor contribute two hundred and fifty, and we had our current mayor do the same batch that. So total, we made, uh, twenty-five hundred fifty-seven dollars, a few odd cents. That will be enough for us to purchase about five cameras. That's one for each of our intersections where we have crossing guards. They will be able to wear them around with a harness. Um, Ryan has generously offered to meet me at Best Buy where we can purchase one set and see how it works and what we need to adapt and adjust or what other things we might need. And then we'll go forward with that. So it's kind of been exciting.
See what citizens can do. Thank you, Jeanette. That's amazing that so many people stepped up. And, you know, if every, a hundred people give a dollar, then it's, you know, it's not a burden on anybody. And we have an opportunity to, to help our crossing guards. Um.
Okay.
Yay. Um. As we try this new technology out, it's unfortunate that we have people speeding through our, our crossing zones for our kids. Um, and Ryan made a statement one time that I think is, it is so appropriate. And that is if each of you in this room would commit to going the speed limit, then everyone who is behind you has to go the speed limit. They might honk at you, but at least they're going the speed limit. Um, so we'll be reporting on how this is all working out, and we appreciate the participation from everyone. Um. The next item on the agenda is our city code codification. So this is a public hearing. And at this point in time, thank you for coming. At this point in time, we would take comment from the people who are in attendance and online. Thank you.
I just noticed that, as that leaves how much help they've been and, and appreciate Jeanette, uh, you know, from a staff perspective. We've cer- certainly appreciated all of the help. Um, those in this room have made a tremendous help to move things along, so.
Less than a month, we had enough money to do that.
But, uh, back to the codification, this has been a long, uh, process. Um, we have talked about it last month as you, as you're aware, and has been out in the public, uh, open for public comment for more than thirty days. So, um, this is something that has been available to the public for quite a while. Uh, if there's any comment, uh, we're, we're certainly interested in that, but it has been out there, so.
Been on the website, and we discussed it in a, in a previous, um, city council meeting. So we will take comments at this point in time. Do we have any online?
No.
None at all? Okay. Okay, so not having any comment, I will close that portion of the meeting and go on to, um, the ordinance that we will need to vote on. So the Providence City Council will review, discuss, and may take action on an ordinance adopting and enacting a new code for Providence City. This was, um, went to an attorney firm that went through and helped us clean up our code so that duplications and things that, uh, were no longer appropriate were taken out of the code. And so we now need to make it part of our city.
I have a question for Ryan. Ryan, what was it? What was it? Like, what was the approximate cost of this codification process with that firm, do you recall? I'm sorry for putting you on the spot.
No, I thi- I think we're around the fifteen thousand mark. Um, and, uh, I would say just not just the attorney, um, but the hours and hours spent by staff time, uh, by members of the council. Um, we had a subcommittee that met, uh, a number of times. Um, and as we reviewed and, and reading through all of that, uh, Jeff and Janelle, uh, both, I assume, read it several times as, as did I, uh, as did many of the staff. Um, this was a, uh, this is a long process. Keep in mind, generally you codify your code every ten years or so, and it's been thirty-plus years, something like that. Um, this is a, uh, the big thing, but, but to get it back, to bring all of those ordinances back in and, and, and clean it up is a, is a big undertaking. Um, by the attorney and by everybody else that's been involved. So this is, you know, I don't know that's answering your question around that.
For people who weren't aware of it, it's, it's an end page, so it's almost.
And we all read it. About us multiple times.
And I'm assuming the benefit though is also, um, I mean, you could have one legal challenge or one administrative challenge or something, your code that's not clear. And, and that can be rather costly for them.
It, it certainly can, especially if there's conflicts, if something has been updated in one spot and there's a conflict in another. Um, it's also great for, for the council to be able to dived in as deep as it is. Um, at least, you know, once in a, once in a term, once in every other term to go to that depth. Um, it's a, it's a pretty good exercise to do. Not one will do every month. Or every year.
Well, I mean, that helped us to just start making a list of things that we need to point to in our code. So those will be coming before the planning commission. Well, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance zero six dash three three two.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Janelle, second by Jeff. Um, any further discussion? Now's the time, actually.
Actually, this is the time. So on page thirty-one. In the definitions, it talks about peak use months. Means months when demand for usage of culinary water includes irrigation of lawns, gardens, and parks. Then scratch two is usually the month of May through September, where we don't identify any months. Is it any reason to put peak use months? Or would it be a peak use period?
Uh, we would use peak use months. Um, and, uh, we just, instead of defining those as May through September, um, we figured the definition was, was encompassing enough in that. Um, to, that's when we, that's when we water our lawns. Um, you know, you don't have to water it in September. Um, a peak use month might become April, uh, might be October, depending on heat. It's just to limit that. I think the, the paragraph was more, the section was more limiting than it was anything else, so we just took it out. But, uh, we did check, one thing we did, we did go through and check that each of the definitions were used. And it, so if peak use months isn't used as a definition, we took those things out. So I, I'm confident that somewhere, I don't, I can't tell you the reference exactly. Perfect. At some point, that definition is used. So anyway, we did make sure that those definitions were actually used, so. So anyway, we did make sure that those definitions were actually used. So.
Is that these, is that singular? Or would that be representatives?
On page thirty seven.
Bottom thirty seven. Or thirty six? Yeah, okay. So yes, I'm sorry, thirty six. Secondary water stock designated representative means a person appointed by resolution. Uh, do we only have one for?
We have one for each company.
So would it be plural or maybe a parentheses three persons?
I think it's singular because of the five individually.
I think we have somewhere that it says that everything that is singular is also plural and everything's plural is also singular. I don't know. I don't know, but I I believe there is some spot that they that they went to make sure that if there's a singular or plural reference. So, so anyway, but thanks for the catch and we can change if we want.
Disclaimer. So I have a few notes. Janelle's like, oh, bring it. I asked Ryan to read this and he said I did. That that it's our job as legislators that this is what we were elected for, not for parties. So. So I slopped through it and I actually caught a few things and I, these are about half of my notes. I went through them with Ryan yesterday. And a lot of things are cleared up, but there's a few things that I I would like to bring up and um request. Um, are are changed during this codification. So I'm using the strike through copy and I had, I sent a copy of this to Ryan and to Ty so they they have a copy of my notes. But on page fifty nine and sixty on the strike through copy. Um, there's the word charter used. Uh, we throughout, we use the word chapter, not charter. So on section D, it should be chapter, not charter and. Um, P needs to also be changed from chapter to charter.
From charter to chapter.
From charter to chapter. Um, and I'll just keep going through these and did you do a word search? No, I didn't search. I didn't search for more. Um, it would be a good idea, but I only went so far.
That's because you want to come back for more.
Um, and maybe we could, I don't know if we can blanket ask Ty to do a word search for charter. To be changed to chapter. Then page sixty three. It's um, two dash three dash one says historical heritage. Um, historical heritage is redundant. It just needs to be heritage. Unless anyone opposes. Sixty three, two dash three dash one. I I just have my notes. But if you want to look, it's on page sixty three. Two dash three dash one.
Says recognition is about the historical preservation commission. Is recognize that the historical heritage of the city is among its most valued and important assets. She just says, say heritage instead of historical heritage.
I agree.
Okay, so it's assumed you agree unless you say I don't agree. Page sixty nine. Oh, no, you can say whatever you want, but I'm just saying that for everyone, right? Sixty nine, three dash one dash five. Number six. Calls out childcare. Um, it it doesn't need childcare is a home business, so it just needs to state all home businesses.
I I agree with that, but there is a whole section on, and I made notes, but that's something that we need to look at is the um. Business type regulations.
There's a whole section.
Section on childcare that's different from like other businesses and home businesses. I think that whole section can be.
There are some things that are regulated by the state on childcare. So they regulate above a certain number of four, eight.
I don't remember.
I don't remember the number, but they regulate above a certain number and then for us, we put in regulations. Uh, below the state's regulation number. Um, so at this point, uh, we can either leave it as it is or take it out. If there are large items, I would, I would say we put a pin in those and put them on a list that that are detail ones. If we want to go into the childcare ones in depth, I think that.
We have to address the whole section also.
No, because it's still childcare, childcare is still a home business and still still is involved.
Um, okay, page eighty two. L is a repeat because it's also listed under prohibited businesses. You have to look at context. I'm just looking at my notes. Is listed under prohibited businesses.
Prohibited home businesses can't be a commercial stable or kennel and stable and kennels a home business shall not be interpreted as a commercial stable or kennel. You're you're asking L to be struck because it's it's inclusive and for here.
On page one thirty five.
People can get a kennel license. And have a kennel license without having a commercial kennel. Well, if they have more than three dogs, they have to do kennel license, but they may not actually be a business. Yes, they're not a business.
Yeah, I think they are yours.
Let's check that before.
Okay, don't strike it.
It's not a home business.
Maybe the key word is business.
So I think it's strike L, but I think stables and kennels are still on the list of definitions. And I think the licensure is addressed in, I think, chapter five as well.
Sophie and Sydney, doesn't this make you want to run for city council when you grow up? I'm okay with not striking it. I just saw it as redundant.
Yeah, I'm thinking that can be struck because of its reference to a home business, but I think the definition. Is at the beginning and it's used again farther down in a different chapter where it says they have to get a kennel license. And it doesn't specify that it's a home business. I don't know. Does that?
This is home businesses. They were talking about this chapter is specific to home business regulations.
The business is one that's making money.
We we believe it can be struck.
Strike it. Page one thirty five. I believe that there are no longer any dairies or feed lots in Providence. They would definitely fall in the public nuisance of five dash one dash twenty four. I believe that dairy and feedlots could be removed on page thirty five. Because it's covered as a public nuisance in five dash one dash twenty four.
I'm fine to strike that. We didn't really strike anything that wasn't. Like careful and technical in nature because we felt like it was the council's priority to discuss that.
Okay, well, and I left my big list. At home. This is just the little.
Thank you. Look forward to many animal discussions.
Um, I was proud to have caught the typo on five dash one dash twenty B. Where it says sheet, not sheep.
You might have more sheets than you have seats.
I read people, page one forty four. Five dash five dash six. Um, the two sentences are the same except one says side and one says back. I think they could be combined into one sentence that says side and back. Or rear, I, yeah. Yeah, A B combined to one sentence. Then page one sixty one. Seven dash two dash three. Um. At the end of seven dash two dash three, it says something like unless special permitted permission is granted by the city council. I am of the opinion that we don't want roads to become political. If it needs special permission, then that would basically be a special ordinance creating an exception. I would strike that unless special permission.
Page again, sorry.
Um, one sixty one. Seven dash two dash three.
So 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 my question is, this is in in codification process, we're we're cleaning, we're cleaning up code. To provide clarity of language and conformity with state law and stuff like this with striking something like that constitute a. An ordinance change or code change. My opinion is what she described would would be a would be a code change.
The the codification is a complete code change as a as a whole. You're right. Can it be? I mean, there are some things like this that can be struck. Um, if it's a big enough item that it needs to be on its own, we should, we should do that. But this is an order.
We're the letter of the law here. If you're changing them. If the letter of the law really ought to be a.
Yeah.
It should be a separate different issue.
Right.
It needs more discussion than what.
Right. If it needs, if he needs to go into.
Study.
Yeah.
I'm almost done. I'm going to three more, four more.
Were you striking that?
Or is that something we ought to?
So I I would say that should be a discussion still. I would strike that.
Add that to our list.
Maybe, maybe we can give special permission.
You.
Has it been done before?
Sounds like a lawsuit to me.
I mean, you're talking about.
You're forming, you're forming a political speech area, which we would, right?
No, right, right, right. I think the the context of this, I mean, if you're looking at it that, you know. Person or agent contractor or employee to construct a street or sidewalk, which does not conform to specifications established by the city engineer. Or other rights representative unless special permission is deviated. So at that point, would you ever allow a street? To be to be constructed that is not in line with your city engineer, your public works director or your city manager. No.
Should be done by the council.
No.
Those are a different specification than our standards.
But our standards allow for depth, um, allow for that, but but this is saying if it's varies from your engineer. Your other authorized representatives. Yeah, I think if there's a question, if there's a question of of whether it's. Um, in more depth, I would, I would pin it and and bring it back under. Uh, under a specific ordinance, add it to your list if there's anything.
Well, it may indeed stay like this once we discuss it or we might strike it.
Okay.
But it probably needs a little bit more information. Okay. But good catch. Okay, so the I and on the same note, seven dash two dash five is saying that the city council. Um, would say whether like bricks could be put in the road for a building project, but really that should be the public works director. Not the city council. Like, we don't know.
Yes, at this point, that's kind of a, if you're going to block the city street in order to construct a building. To do that, I mean, if if we have a street that's going to be closed. You know, I with Carrie, I would say our public works director would would know whether we could close a street or if we can't for a construction. I don't know that, I don't know that we want that to become a. Elevated council issue. I don't know that we want many using the street to construct buildings, but if they needed a crane to come in. I I think at that point, your public work structure is going to know whether there's. Uh, an ability to reroute or if that's the only street coming down, that's the only street coming down from an area. You don't want to block it anyway. So.
So my suggestion would be changing city council to public work, public works director on five dot or seven dash two dash five.
I think I have to agree with that. I don't think that needs to come to city council. I think that's uh, something that can turn to our public works director. Sometimes a pile of gravel gets dumped in late evening and there needs to be a barricade put around it. They call Rob. Put up some barricades around it just.
And Rob says, wait till next month when the city council meet.
I think that's something we.
And we haven't other things corrected the person in which is doing it. So if we've, if we've said. You know, this is more of a recorder issue than a treasure issue or a treasurer than a recorder or a administrative service director or a or community development director. We have throughout the code corrected the the individual that's that's directed to do that. We have done some of that corrections with.
Yeah, that's consistent with what the changes that have been made. And then page one ninety eight, there's an application. Um, it seems to me like having, this is what the application needs to look like or have on it in the ordinance is overkill. So I would strike through the application so that can be whatever it needs to be at the time. Page one ninety eight.
And you can see that even at that point, we hadn't updated the address. And so if there's a change in address or if there's a change in phone number. Or maybe the division of the division of water rights changes to the division of water rights and X Y or whatever. If there's some change, ha- having a, having an actual application inside the code probably doesn't need to be there. We take those out and we, so we can modify and get the information we need to fulfill the intent of the ordinance. I'm sure dedication of water rights.
I don't know. The dedication, the dedication of water rights generally comes to the uh, state and we are get it as a deed. And it actually has a title threat on it. It's treated more like real property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not a share. It's a right.
So this battery is probably not even used at this point then.
So I'd say scratch it. Then we don't have to read it again. Let's make this the couple pages shorter for next time. Sorry, Brandon is talking over you.
No, that's no problem.
I'm making jokes over here.
Good.
Page two forty three. Um, I asked Ryan if definitions at the end of ten dash one dash two, number two needed to be taken off. And we caught that actually we need to take out R three oh nine dash thirteen dash six. And definitions at the end of that sentence on ten dash one dash two.
R three oh nine one sixteen isn't actually um, rule anymore. That's not the rule number.
Was that a state rule?
Mm hmm. They should, yes, they should have caught in it.
But I caught it.
You caught it with the definitions and we and and we searched and said.
You should bill of attorneys rates.
I should have been an attorney. That's still good. Page two, I know I shouldn't. I had to like take a nap. I could read for an hour and then I've napped for an hour. Um, two sixty two, number two, it's a capital A at the beginning as identified. That's it. That's where I stop.
I have a more mundane question. Um, I noticed throughout that definitions and strike two is reserved and some say reserved, but I'm not 100% sure why that was.
So what we did is we consolidated, one of the things we did was consolidated the definitions into one section. Rather than having multiple places where the.
Why is that something reserved in the code?
Because we didn't want to change the actual reference to a code section. So. It, that is deleted and, and we have a one that we could use, but rather than renumber all of the code. We didn't renum, we chose not to renumber all of the sections.
Understand why.
It doesn't truly mean a lot, but for those of us that are starting to memorize different sections, it. It does, that, that was just. Define reserve.
I'm just wondering, or, or another word that says what, it just seems really ambiguous to me.
Empty.
Look at the way I'm scratching my head right now.
Well, we didn't have a better way and that's the, how the attorney did it. So like, I don't know any better.
It seems very legal these, you know.
When they don't have the red line, it's just, just a slot. Yeah. It's, it's reserved if we wanna use it someday when we're redoing that code, we can put something in, I guess. I have no idea.
Going on, there's a section one thirty-eight about animals and designated areas and parks, and the second part is struck, struck out with. Except for city events. Is the theory being that. That an event is a theory being that like we could change designation in city parks? Because we would have violated that ourselves with, with the city celebration last week.
That's the purpose is so Zollinger Park is a no animal park or no pets park. And so, but on sauerkraut days or at something else, maybe you want, you might wanna have the.
Why agree? That's what was struck from the code.
If you want to unstrike it, I'm okay with that.
I think we should unstrike that.
At that point.
Authority to grant permit.
At that, the, the enforcement comes from the city, so that would be enforcing upon ourselves, probably.
That's my question of whether or not we could change the designation and say that's okay. If we can, it doesn't need to.
At, at that point, at that point, I think the idea was, is, is why, um. Why have restrictions, why have the city have different? Yeah, I think that's what kind of come up, but at this point, it's a question of would the city enforce upon itself? If we had, if the city event allows for an animal to have that, then it's, it's kind of allowed in part, but.
The city has to live to its code. It does have to live to its code.
I would keep it in because I can think, I mean, I would love to see you stretch your butt. Carrie, put that on your party list sometime in the future, you know, and. Dog day, it's a party.
She's got her party list.
Oh, add it to my party list. Yeah.
I think we keep it in then. Come up to the mic and say who you are.
My name's Howard Fisher. Uh, just like to make a comment on that. Uh. They wouldn't have been able to have the sheriff there with these canine. If you didn't. Approve variances to that. Or what about the pettings who they had there during sauerkraut days? You wouldn't have been able to do that and that, that was a big attraction for the kids.
But I would say that's probably technically accurate, but at that point, you didn't convene the council. To make the approval of those things as the code would have allowed you. So in technicality. It's still violated it because you didn't convene and make the approval of it. So a, a, at that point, I think, I think that's, that's one of those, do you enforce? There are some things and, and I, I think a, a staff and a council. Um, we have things that, that we would like to make sure that we follow every code. Um, but there are, there are times that, that a code isn't enforced.
Is it a shower in May? Cause, cause what, what if we kept it in and we, and we, and we make it a.
We can look at that one. Yeah.
Does that make sense? So then we're not, then we're not. We get to have it, to have it.
Do you know which one that is?
I don't know if it says shall or may. Typically, that's just the way you kind of work around it.
It's one for you. So it gives you.
Yeah.
That was one of the like fifty that Ryan talked me off the cliff on.
Uh, uh, unless the area is designated for animals and who made the designation for animals. It can be, it can be unstruck. It can be unstruck. So no.
It's always allowed by, by law as a need.
I don't believe so. I don't believe so, cause that, cause, cause you'll have a federal state law that over supersedes that.
We do talk about service dogs in the code, Brent. It may say something about that somewhere else in the code.
No, I'm still trying to think of a word for reserved.
If the attorney uses it, it's probably okay. What if a bunch of eagle legalese?
What if they just said reserved for future use? Would that make?
That would make more sense. Just reserved for future code or something. I should have reserved me. I really don't. Is that like a VIP parking space or, or, yeah, yeah, I don't think. I like reserved for future use. I actually think if someone sees the code, that will mean something to them. And, and this is coming from someone who prefers less words than more.
We'll add, we'll add those extra words for each of those spots.
Strike it, stripping it from the record.
All right. So, any other comments, any other changes, any other? Things that we need to do to this, cause we have a motion in a second. I wanna remember, cause Jeff and I kept looking at each other like, I can't remember why we did it on some of this stuff, but, um. The whole section about special events.
We haven't had, I think it was, uh, it hadn't been used, if I recall. I don't know that. We have many that have, we've had actual special permits gone through. How many do you think we've done in the last? Ten years.
We have not had any, because they either go through the county. Or else they're not using our roads. There was a time when we had quite a few people. Using our roads for fun runs to raise money for certain people. But now there's different ways to raise money. We haven't had them, cause they can still hold an event in one of our parks. But because a park is set aside to hold those kind of events. What we don't want is for them to hold street dances and things like that without coming and talking to us. And people don't do that anymore. We just haven't had people ask for that. We do still have events, just not in the middle of the street.
Hey, any further discussion?
When do we get to do this again?
When do we get to send all of our lists to?
Send them in once you've approved this.
I sent mine in yesterday, so I'm pretty sure it's all at the top of the list. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. And our discussion.
We need to amend the motion to, amend the motion that we make the changes as presented and discussed. Um, the code codification ordinance zero six.
Second though.
Okay, so we have an amended. Motion and second. Anything further? All in favor? I, I. Hey. Lots of new going on. Um. Item number seven is a cooperative career service council interlocal agreement. And Ryan will give us some information on this.
So, this came to us, um, from actually, uh, representative of the health department. Um, but some of the other entities, uh, small entities, um. Because we don't have a full-fledged, uh, human resource department and some of those things, this gives an avenue. Of a, of a grievance. If there's a, if there's an issue, um, we don't necessarily have any specific ones. Um, that we're working on at this point. Um, but rather than have that, um. Have, have very few options. This broadens the ability and says, hey. You know, if there's a grievance inside from one of our, uh, staff, um, we would offer them and say, hey, this is a. This is an independent body, um, uh, basically, uh, body of their peers, other cities, other. Uh, similar government entities, um, and they could go to this, um, and, uh. And seek a, a resolution to a grievance that they might, might have. And we would participate in the, in the reverse of that and we'd say, you know. Um, if there's something happening with a member of a different city and they have a grievance, rather than it become. Um, either politically or public or, or coming to the council and having it at a public meeting. Um, this allows kind of a group of their peers. It, it's non-binding. It's, it's an option, uh, for, for that. Um, but allows us to also participate if others are having, um. Having an issue, we can help, uh, sit on as a, as a reviewer and help to review that and say, yeah, you know, that's something. Um, and then that group, uh, would, would be convened if there's a need. Um, if there's never a need, then there's not a, nobody ever gets convened. But it just simply allows for some of those, um. It, uh, it, it, it allows it to be developed prior to a need. I guess that's really where we're at and, and. They, some of the other entities, it felt like they might have had a need in the past and we said, you know, that's something we could participate in and. If we saw a need, we could, we could do something like that. So anyway, that's where it's at. Um, and so we're looking for, for, and. If you want us to allow us to participate in something like that, we'd, we'd definitely do it. If it's not your interest, then we'd continue without it. So. That helped.
Well, um, let's, let's, let's take a motion on it.
I don't know. Are we ready for a motion?
Make a motion.
I move that we approve. Is it still item number seven? Item number seven, one per services council or local agreement.
Here we have a motion second, second by Carrie. Okay, now is the time to discuss.
I had a cou- a couple of questions. It's on the organization section five. This is membership. Each participating party shall designate a primary human resource professional. Now. Where do we get the professional?
Well, that, that's the one that is designed for us. Um, so we have Diane that, that. And it covers, uh, a lot of our human resource items. Um, so it could be Diane or myself. E- either one, I don't know that we would say that, I don't know that we, either one of us would call ourselves professionals. Um, depending on the issue, it might be, um, Ty or, or Scarlett or. Um, or any of our senior staff, um, Rob or Angie, we, we could, we could. We could specify who that is when it came to the need and it might be different, um, based on that.
It's not, it's not totally defined either.
Yeah. Yeah, so the, the parties would be the, any of the entities that decide to join the group. So, so it's been presented to the cities, um, and the various cities. I, I don't know any that have, have currently signed on. Um, I don't, I don't have a list of any of them that are currently signed on to it at this point. Um, but, uh. The director of the health department has been the, the first. First one initiating, so, so it'd be there. Uh, I know that discussion with C V, C D T D has been a potential. Um, so it's any of those kind of, the parties is any of the, um, government entities that would want to participate in this. That would be the definition of those. So it's broad because it's not every city, cause not every city has to come on. Um, it may be two cities and it may be. Uh, if they want to participate, they'd have to adopt this.
I don't want to tell you all so about it, but when I read it, I felt like. It was to address a personnel grievance, but the act that establishes the ability to create interlocal. Councils or whatever has no teeth to the act. It's just saying you can create an interlocal council if you would like to, basically. But. As I kept trying to think, how would this ever be used? If somebody, if, if a member of our staff had a H R grievance. And they would probably bring it to our own staff first, I'm guessing. If they took it to this group. Because they didn't feel like the answer was what they wanted or it was handled the way they wanted. It would just be like another place to go complain. There's nothing that that group could actually. Probably could reverse our staff's decision on our own personnel. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Agrees.
Feels like. Why?
Do you have an example?
Let's make up a hypothetical. Let's, what's that? Uh, similar, yeah, similar, uh, uh, on Buzzman has a little different, but. Yeah, um, no, that's true. Um, so let's, let's say for instance. Um. Let's say for instance, Rob, I'll pick on Rob. Say Rob and I have a, have a. Um, that he says, you know, this has been created a hostile work environment. And I'm like, wow, you know, and, and it's against me. Um, and, uh, so maybe, maybe he has a grievance and, and maybe it's valid, maybe it's not. But at that point, because it's at that level, it becomes a difficult one for, for me to say. Hey, no, you, no, you haven't. You, you denied. And I say, wait. You know, let me refer this off to this body, um, so that I can remove myself out of that, out of that position. Let's take a, a second look. Let's take a step back, um, before this has to, you know, be blown up. Any farther outer proportion. Let's take a step back and, uh, and let's refer it to this body. Let, let's have it go. Um, and take this grievance, um, to a different group. That would be able to look at it from a, um, I mean, Rob and I work close, you know, every day we're. You know, we're, we're working close on, on a lot of things, but it allows for a independent group. Um, to maybe look at it and say, okay, you know, you, we understand your grievance, um, you know. And, and it kind of puts that as a, as an ability for a. Yeah, maybe, somewhere in that realm.
Because otherwise, I would think if given the example that you're giving, if staff to issue a few, they bring it to us, wouldn't they?
Yeah, yeah. And, and that, and that's exactly one of the steps is it allows for. Another option than having Rob and I fight in a open public meeting with. The council. It allows for a, a potential, um. Body of, of, of our peers to, to help us to resolve our issue and then maybe we can resolve it there. Not necessarily. Yeah, for character, for, for character items, um, there are certain ones, um, but some things may not. So.
Don't worry, I've ever heard that. Limits and still pick character related items. My understanding is personnel related.
I'd have to look up the.
Look at the exact. Look at the exact.
I, the. I think it's competency.
Professional competence or other factors allowed under this section. So anyway, it, it's simply an option to allow. And anyway.
We may never use it.
We may never use it, it may never be used at all.
Well, we can cancel it within thirty days, we can cancel our table faster.
So anyway.
I know a little bit about we, about each party agrees to pay all costs for things that are employed, serving on this council. So we volunteer employees to serve on this council, we pay all costs associated with that.
They're not going to Mexico, I think, because I think it's just their time, right? That's.
So then it says legal representative. We agreed, participating party shall bear the burden of providing and paying for legal representation. So now here we start now, having the agreed party bring legal counsel into this mediating body. So now, you know, anytime you have one party bringing legal counsel. Where's the other side get the legal representation? I mean, you never want to have basically volunteers or assigned people to stand up to an attorney. Where does that legal counsel come on the other side? I don't see it.
And, and at this point, this body isn't having a legal counsel. If the aggrieved party brings legal counsel, it's their, it's on their cost. It, what it's saying is, is that this body is not responsible for the legal counsel either side. If you want to bring a legal counsel on your side, that's, that's your responsibility at that point.
The other point is, is if they're actually going to try and get something from this body and they bring legal counsel. There needs to be legal counsel representing what this body is saying, they'll get torn apart. In other words. Okay.
This body doesn't want to get that, that deep into the, in, in the, in the legal side. There, there, there's no binding spot to it.
I guess I would be more interested in, and you brought up yourself as an example. But if there was a personnel related issue with you, I actually would like to see the prospective council notified of something like that.
I just, right, it could be in reverse, maybe Rob's the one creating also working environment. Yeah, yeah, no, I, I just tried to, to present something in without offending or, or picking on anyone else. I just, I just tried to, I just tried to highlight myself. I couldn't have brought it to this, this, but yeah, it would have been easier and solved and, and we would have hugged it out, I don't know.
From my point of view, I just think, why? But it's like it's something that would be helpful to have. You know, make you think.
Or what, what do you think?
Well, actually, Ryan and I haven't talked about it, so I read through it, but we haven't talked about it. So I, there's pros and cons to it. Having an independent body sometimes makes someone feel like they can go an avenue that they may not feel like they have if it's in-house, totally kept in-house. But sometimes, as long as it's an optional thing and doesn't replace an in-house thing. Because sometimes somebody would feel like, well, I've got a problem, but I don't want to go share my dirty laundry with every other city in this group. Even though you know they're supposed to keep that all very quiet and be responsible. But so they may not feel comfortable, you know, there's pros and cons to it. But as long as it's not mandatory, as long as someone could either do it in-house or go there, I think maybe you'd be okay with it.
Obvious.
But like I said, right, and I haven't.
They can say, oh, thanks, I'd rather hear the city council.
Sure.
In a public meeting. And Mike.
No pressure, it's either way. It's not like this is a, this is a hard one. It's a, it's, this is an option that was presented and says, hey, this is an option you're interested in us, us being able to have in the, in the toolbox.
It's something we can think about, it's not something that we have to do today. And.
We have to vote on it now because it's been moved to second.
You can vote no, but that doesn't keep it from coming back.
Yeah.
We just are not going to act on it today.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we have to act on the motion. Right, we're trying to motion, but I'm not going to.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve.
That's great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Okay, so we have two for and three opposed, so the, the motion fails.
Yay, yay.
These three were.
We're left this.
One side is tipping one way, the other side.
Rob, you got a problem, you just come to me and I'll work it out.
Okay. Item number eight. Is the property purchase, so Ryan, this one's yours as well.
Well, we had talked about the Singleton property. At that point, we talked about the potential purchase. They have since subdivided the property and. Nope, that one wasn't the one. So anyway, we talked about the property, this is the three lots. We got an appraisal, we visited with them. The initial amount was, was to kind of match the amount we paid for the other parks. They're asking for more than, than that. Their, their ask is three hundred thousand for one point nine something, I think I have to add them up, but basically one point nine acres. It would be the highest amount that we would have paid for, for property. It's semi-flat but not, not extremely flat. And, and as they came back and since we've talked about the property, it kind of felt like it would be fair for this council and body to have a kind of a final vote if it's something you're really interested in. If we want to go into negotiating price, that's a closed session. Their number back to me was the three hundred. That's why I bring that number to you in a public meeting. And it would be those three lots and that's what we're potentially looking at. So anyway. But.
No.
The one at the bottom is quite a bit bigger.
Littleville. Excellent. So that's two point, that's two point six eight acres. So it's good, yeah, it's almost got another acre to it. But anyway.
So by three entertaining motions?
Yes, I will in a motion.
I move that we reject the purchase of the property located in itself. I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reject. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 What she carries? Thank you.
I would update as we're talking about property purchase, just so that you're aware. The other property that we had purchased, they are, they're, the other property that we discussed purchasing upon first east and between third and fourth south, they have it under contract with the development. So that's, that's a no for us. So they've, they've chosen to go in a different direction. So yeah, just so you know the finality of that one as well.
Okay. Item number nine, interlocal agreement with the cash waste consortium, that's mine. We've talked about the garbage situation and the fact that Logan City within the next three years is no longer going to collect our garbage. So the mayors got together and we put together a group called Cash Waste Consortium. We have an agreement that you each have a copy of. And hopefully you have had an opportunity to read through that. We're not taking any action on that tonight because this is a document that is still in flux. There are some issues that we still need to hammer out. This, this particular agreement asks that the council give me, the mayor, the ability to sign off on the, a garbage RFP. We put out an, an RFP and in reality, we can't act on it because we are not a body. And so this agreement, when and if it gets signed, right now, we just wanted to get it in front of you. Because we think that there are some, there are some issues with that. But with, with the explanation in mind, if you will go through it and then let us know what kind of feedback you have about it, but we'll be coming back with more information.
I'm, well, can you back on it now?
Sure.
Um, well, a couple of things, I thought that interesting that the budget is set around the county's budget year. When most of the entities or cities, the budget year should be set around the city's budget year. I think it should be set around the county's budget year. Because the number of residents within the county is much smaller than the cities in, you know, comparison. I don't think everything should revolve around the counties. Those are part of the issues, right?
That's good.
Right? Um. And then I guess Cornish is on the fence, that's why they're, they're out. They're exempted, but they have a signature, they're exempted in the language, but they have a signature line at the bottom of the document.
Since we did this, they have opted out.
So they have opted out for sure.
So are those, those cities, are they, you know, they combining together in, in some way or?
Not necessarily.
On the north end of the valley.
Burn all their trash.
Add to the particulates. I do not, I do not know what they're doing, we've kind of stayed out of. They, we asked them, all the cities to say, are you in, are you out? And they said, we're out. So we haven't explored what they're doing, I can't, I can't give you that information.
Have you gotten any numbers back from the bids?
Yes, we do.
What, if they come with that?
We're not sharing those.
You can't open them or you haven't opened them yet or can't share them? So for, for me, from my position, I feel like it doesn't make sense for me to form an interlocal agency if we can do the same thing for the same price or better. We'd have to compare it to what.
Yes.
What we've been, what's, what's out there, but they're not willing to share that. So how are we supposed to make the best decision for what we're doing? If we can't.
We're in the process of looking at all of that and it will all be shared. But we could not put out an official RFP because we weren't a body.
Can I make a comment on that one?
Yeah.
I, I think to answer that more clearly is they issued the RFPs, they have the numbers back. The fear at this point from the body and what I think that they'd like to accomplish is because they're going to have to go out and rebid this and do it underneath, if they, if they form this body, they'll have to do it under that body's name. So they're not buying, they're not, the bids aren't bound to any entity. And so they don't want to taint the potential that those bid numbers get out to the other bidders. And if we went through that bid here and the other bidders got it, it might taint the bid of what comes back from those bidders, if that makes sense. I have the numbers and I would be happy to individually review those numbers with you.
The group of mayors, but we have no. No, there is not.
So, so the. Right, because it was, it was a legal entity and there was an RFP.
Right.
You'd be legally bound to not share it, but there's, but there's, but you just made a pact and we're not going to share this bit.
Well, we don't want to, we don't want to taint it. So that they won't come back and do it.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand, understand that logic, I just wanted to make.
We're not trying to, we're not trying to play one against the other and we want to make sure.
You want to make sure these people stay involved, because they're the only people you have to work with. Yeah, I get it.
One item, an example of a legal body that wouldn't release numbers. So the releasing isn't necessarily as, as odd as it might sound. UDOT, if they, if all bids come in fifteen percent or greater, they will hold those back from the public and, and not allow the public to see those as they evaluate what they're going to do and whether they rebid. And if they rebid, they won't release that number to the public. So that does happen in some of those kind of contexts.
Allow that, that would have to be.
You're right, you're right, but at that point, UDOT does a fifteen percent. If it's, if they're all fifteen percent or more over the bid price, they don't release that. And then they can evaluate if they go to rebid and if they do, first bid doesn't get out to the bidders, so that doesn't change something. But it's not a legal body, which is a different question, I just, I just trying to open.
Privately, you'd be willing to share it with us, and I'm kind of wondering if that, but that seems like it's kind of subterfuge to what the intent of like, you know, think I'm a council member and I get some information privately, I feel like I have to share that with people.
I think anything you would get in a closed session, you wouldn't, but I think it would be confident, as I received it confidentially. I, I, you're my boss, I don't think I hold anything back from my boss.
I, I don't think I would want to, I'm just wondering if I did, I, I would, I'm just worried if I would be obligated.
I think the obligation of a grammar request is the owner and, and the holder of the record. So the body that issued would own it and they own the documents. So if there was a grammar request to the city, I would reference them back to the body that issued the RFP, which which, which doesn't exist, but Peterson is the, is the ones that's name was on that, so I would send them back to the mayor Peterson.
My question is to figure out how informed I can be without getting myself in trouble.
Yeah.
Okay, then that's what I guess.
Right.
But you feel like you're.
Well, the body that issued it is not, that we were not in, in public meeting. We were a bunch of mayors that were meeting, but, but we were, so we didn't have to publicly notice that we were having those meetings, we didn't take minutes, we didn't, we had sort of an agenda. And so it's not a public document.
Sense, okay.
So is this the first public document that's come forth right here?
This, this agreement that we're talking about is, it came from John Loopy at the county. Prepared it. But there are some things that we need to make different in this and there are some other ideas that are coming forward. So we give this to you to let you know that this is the, kind of the direction that we're heading. But we're not sure that this is written in stone.
So my question comes if as an example, we have three entities that besides the candidates without being a part of the consortium, the count of this group. Is it something that? Is it something that this city would be worth exploring and not be part of consortium? The reason I bring that forward is there are going to be expenses that will probably be associated with the consortium. And now when I think of those expenses, there's going to have to probably be a controller counting as to take the monies in from the entity, each entity and get the bills paid. There's going to be administrative meetings. There's going to be administrative finances. Probably some legal counsel and et cetera. That is going to be passed on to various parties that are in this and if is it worth exploring? Dealing this with as, I mean, we have a pretty large body of people here, eight thousand plus. Uh, is it worth exploring as a proven city?
It's all part of the numbers that we're looking.
Now, so you are considering possibly as a mayor, us being an entity unto ourselves for garbage collection rather than being part of this consortium?
That's always a possibility.
I'm just, to Janelle's point, I'm wondering, is there any problem with? I mean, do you play both hands at one point in time here? You, because, because the idea of forming a, sorry, the idea of forming a consortium is to leverage the purchasing power of, of multiple cities to get a lower price. But if that's the only option that's presented and the people that are bidding know that, then it's hard to say whether or not that will actually come to pass. And those costs won't be inflated because once again, I mean, I use inflammatory terms, but big government tends to, you know, be taken advantage of sometimes where they realize it's just, you know, it's just bureaucratic money together. It's a pool of money. So does it make sense for the city to issue its own RFP so that we can get an independent price and compare that to what we would have under a consortium?
Sounds like something, if we're exploring little side, we ought to deal with.
If we're issuing an RFP, we have, are we bound to, to choose one and go with that?
No, we never. But, but, but that was your point, you know, like we don't want to bring any better deal. Like, I mean, it's just, it's something we never bought before. I've never bought, you know, a trash company. So I don't know what it costs.
Well, we, right now, we're dealing with numbers that we know nothing about.
That's why we're not taking any action at all.
That's, that's what I'm saying. I would think that there's, I would think that we actually probably would want to take action and issue an RFP of our own. So we have some sort of, we can start to calibrate our expectations of where, where it should be.
I think the other concerns I have with the proposal here in the composition is I can see that where it's, we get two mayors from five cities and two mayors from five cities and, and it says they may serve on this here, it says unlimited number of terms. Well, I can, I can see some politics for mayors to stay on and never have representation for other cities to have a vote or to vote on that committee. I, I can just see that and they have an ability to levy to tax, I don't say taxes, but fees and so forth. And, and make a bond and stuff like that. Where we may never have input directly because we've turned this over to two mayors from five cities to represent us. And that we don't have a voice in it. So this becomes very concerning to me.
And that's part of the feedback that I need to take back to the group.
Yeah. Thanks for that, Kathleen. I know I don't need to poo poo this. You're just trying to, honestly, this is like one of the most important problems we need to solve, but I'm a little nervous. And I'm really nervous that it, like our timetable got so short, you know, right? I mean, Logan Basin's have got a year less or something, right?
Well, they, they said two years to start with.
Yeah.
And then there was a piece of legislation that was passed that if, if we can get that removed, then they will give us three years.
Okay.
Before they stop collecting.
I don't know that they would stop collecting and let it pile up. If we're working on it, I.
Terrible thing for them.
I, I think they will continue to work with us. I, those that I've talked to with Logan have assured us that, that they'll work with us if they know that we're working towards an option, but I don't think they want, they don't want to make the news for having garbage pile up at our houses. That's, that's not what they want.
But.
We don't, nobody wants that.
We'll take comments, we'll take, take that feedback back to the group and make some, make whatever changes need to be made. Cause we certainly don't want to have a, a document that people aren't comfortable with.
I see also no comment regarding green waste. Has that even touched on in your group and discussions? Are we still going to Logan City with green waste? Do you have any idea?
That's all part of it.
Okay.
So a dollar a month green waste that was organized, is that going to be gone? The green waste bins like the city should, that is eliminated and part of this as well?
I don't know the answer to that. I, I had assumed that they were, that, that if Logan was getting out of the business, that they were getting out of the business altogether, but I, I don't know the answer to your question.
There's a lot of good questions related to the green west, green waste side of this situation.
And construction waste, that's another area.
And I, and I know that's a profit section.
Yeah.
Well, just my two bits on future RFPs that come out. I think we should try to get RFPs that maintain the level of service that we have. Should aim for that. Okay. And I don't know if we wrote out an RFP that had an RFP, we're speaking out of that soup up here, but it's a request for proposal. Um, which is basically asking for this. Um. If we can have them, I know in the, the language that was put out before, they gave them the option to include all those.
A question that, that's a good, that's a good point. So a question might come up. But if we were to go out on our own, the volume of recycle that we would be collecting would be minor. Um, and is it worth requiring and mandating a recycle? And if we're going to do recycle, it has to be that mandate. But it might come to, in order for us to have a green waste can, would you, would you go to mandating all having a green waste? Or, or not having it? If those were the two options, because it's somewhere in the middle. If there's not enough to pick up, it may be a cost service that wouldn't be cost effective. Does that make sense?
Right now, since there's that big green waste bin, because if that green waste bin's not there, I'm sure every neighbor will fill every other neighbor's green waste bin.
Well, right now, some of the cities, it's a mandatory charge for green waste, whether you have a can or not. In our city, we only charge you for a green waste can if you have a green waste. So it's.
But recycle is mandatory in our city.
I agree with Janelle though. I think we need to provide at least the same level of service as we have previously.
And we want that as well. Okay.
Um, I have one more question regarding this. Right now, it comes on our bill, pay for waste. That's our billing. Our city handles that. Do we send a check on over to Logan City for that? And is that what is the plan is for the future?
Yeah, uh, we're, we're paying Logan in excess of eight hundred and something thousand dollars a year for, for, with what we've collected, for what we pay. So at this point, this is probably one of our largest services that we contract out to provide. I mean, at that point, eight hundred and, somewhere in the eight hundred and fifty thousand range a year is what's paid uh, for between recycled green waste and, and uh, sand, uh, garbage. So we're paying that, paying more than fire and, and uh, sewer treatment, I believe.
In part in that.
I don't think so.
That's the case. It would be the Ryan's.
Sewer is super expensive. It's in that range, but.
Maybe. Yeah, it's coming out of a different fund. That's why I see.
Sewers are the different.
It's probably all to get, it's all together on that bill, but it's coming out of different funds. The Ryan's probably.
Out of the general fund, we're talking about eight hundred thou, about eight hundred thousand. We're paying about seven hundred and fifty, seven hundred and ninety uh, for sewer treatment, I think. Now, there is more as we pay for impact fees, but anyway, but we're talking, I mean, this is a major item as far as what we're collecting and paying to, to Logan currently. So anyway, that helps.
That is an issue.
That is an issue.
But we're aware of that.
That'll make the news too.
Okay. So just be aware that this is, this is a document. It's in flux. If you have additional comments, if you'll send them to me, they are, I'll pass those along to the group. My comment is thank you Kathleen and Ryan and all who are working on this. This is a big elephant. It is a big elephant. And I'm grateful for your efforts.
And I'm, I'm one of eighteen. Thank you. And I, I've been trying to hold our interest. So I'll be back.
We're here.
Good. Well, again, comments that you might have that would be constructive for me to take to the group would be awesome. Okay. Um, I'm going to close that item and we will go on to the project, the pickleball courts. City council will discuss the location of pickleball courts extending the rap parts funds. At, at issue here is the fact that we've received some rap tax funds and we're running up against a date when they, they expire. So so um, I know that we have at least one person here to talk about that issue. Um, Matt, you sent out some information too.
I think it's appropriate that I talk about, cause it's one I put on, I, I put it on the agenda and I think it's more appropriate that I talk about that than, than if, if you mind. I, I, I think you're right. I mean, we have some issues. I, I think this is a, I think this is a staff question and asking for for, for inputs. I, 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 I think that we have good public input in a master plan. We have good public input from, from from players and, and some of that, but, but where we have a struggle is one, we have taken it out to, to an RFP of proposal and to try to get somebody to do it. The cost was prohibitive. Um, and so at that point, we're saying, okay, how much are you really interested in pickleball? Do we want to take out more money to do this? And uh, and at that point, you know, location, do we want to, I mean, we, we get a couple hundred that will say, hey, we, we really want a group of courts where that might be, um, you know, I don't know that. I don't know that's decided or, or, or that. But at that point, you know, we have, we have this pickleball. We, we have people who like it, people that don't. And uh, but, but the real question really comes down to one, our wraps, one of our grants uh, has expired. Do you want me to go and, and renew that? Um, for another year and, and do we think we'll be able to get it done next year? Um, the next one will expire the end of, end of this year. And uh, so question comes, well, what do we, what do we do? Do we, do we go back to the council? And before I went back to the county council, I thought it most appropriate to come back to the council I, I serve and ask it, do you want me to go and ask for more pickleball money? Uh, or at least to renew the pickleball money? Um, so that we can build those. If we don't have enough to build the, the courts we wanted, um, then then at that point, what, what, what do you want me to do about pickleball? And in, in the end, the question of this agenda item is, is council, what would you like me to do about pickleball? Ultimately, that is the question I'm here to ask. Location. I think it was.
Yeah, as a percentage of what we needed.
It was about a hundred thousand a court versus we planned for a hundred and eighty thousand for four court. And it came back almost.
So it's like four hundred.
Between a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty thousand a court. Is what it came out of.
Are they indoor?
No. But post tension, so that they were professional built. Um, but uh, and we only had one respondent.
They didn't have a gold surface.
Almost, I know, but um, and Brager Park, they've said no, they don't want it there. We have a, we have kind of, we have a caveat of the, of the one that there's a, there's a grantee of the park. And if there is a structure built on the park, the grantee of the park gets to be able to have a a veto of something. So they have vetoed it. So that's, that had been in the plan. So that was where we were going to put two of them. But that's a no at this point. Um, maybe some future date that changes, but at this point, that's a no. And uh, so anyway, I really would just kind of like a little direction and, and, and that's what I'm really looking for as your employee. I am looking to see how I can help with pickleball and, and if you can give me a little help, it doesn't have to be motion and action and changing the plan. And I, I just want some help and direction, I guess, and a little discussion to do that.
Besides Brager Park, was there other ones on the plan?
The, the other ones we've talked about on the plan was Meadow Ridge. So um, Meadow Ridge, the other one was Cata Corral. Yeah, those would be, those would be single courts. And where was the single court? No. It has a lot of vegetation around, but it's, it's a pocket park. It's true, but it has vegetation, but it doesn't have distance at the same wing. Right? That, that's a good one. If that's what you wanted to do, that's what I'm asking for. I'm, I.
Rather than let it expire, so we can't go all four at once, why don't we start with one?
It is a rap tax just good for pickleball?
Yes, it was specific.
You have to go back.
If we change from, from one to, if we changed from four to one, we would have to go back.
But we, you have to go back to them if you decided, I don't want to do pickleball. I want to.
Oh, we have to go back anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, hence, hence why I'm kind of getting some.
That they would reallocate the funds. And I think, I feel like the county council, if you made your case, that they would be like, okay, well, that is ridiculous to pay that much money for one court. That they wouldn't limit your funds because.
Or they could say, come back and make an application for something else. They, they might have a new application process. I don't know, but that's kind of the question is if you want me to, to go after it, I'll go back to the county council. I kind of wanted to get some of their.
I think we got that money again, though we got a bid next year. Based upon economic circumstances, supply chain, everything else, I would be surprised if that estimate was half in twenty twenty-three as it wasn't twenty twenty-two. I have to agree with Josh. They're telling, they're going to be, I mean, there's like deflationary pressures and things right now. So I would, I would totally expect that we pay a lot less next year.
How many did we get more than one bid and did they all come in the same?
Just wondered.
Is there any other uh, competitive bidders out there that we could go to?
We tried, the first go around. We tried to get, we tried to work with the people that had built them before and we put it out there to a lot of people.
And now if they're changing out there in the world, interest rate went up again today, that's slowing progress down. People are going to find themselves out of work and more hungry for jobs because the money's not flowing as fast. I think you give it a little bit of time, go back, maybe talk to the council. Give it a little bit of time. You might find some hungry contractors that may start looking at things a little bit.
I totally agree. I think pickleball's here to stay.
Was it a, was it a straight up grant or was it, were we required to match it?
Was it a, was it a straight up grant or was it, were we required to match it?
But it was a grant, did we have a match on it?
We have to do a little bit of a match, but not much, I mean, it's, it's, we just had, we did some in-kind stuff. Well, we did some in-kind stuff, I guess technically you could get a hundred percent grant from them, but we did do some in-kind stuff. Part of the reason we're coming back for this too is because we've just had with our sauerkraut days using the pickleball and doing that little tournament. And even before that, we have people call every now and again, when are you going to get those courts and please don't spread them all over the place, please put them in one location for us to play.
Have tournament.
Well, even if they're not having tournaments, pickleball groups apparently, I'm not a pickleballer.
I am.
They must go in groups.
Yes.
And one or.
It's a herd.
And one court.
Are they herds or flocks?
Or bushels. Wouldn't it be a bushel of pickles? Anyway, um. Back to real business.
That's a good one. I, I like that, in fact, you should have been behind the line for that one. A bushel of pickers.
But that's, that's kind of, you know, I don't know that it's kind of, do you spend money on single courts if they're not going to get utilized? And people really want multiple courts. There's all kinds of things out there that Ryan's trying to work through to see what we can come up with.
So I, I say yes to that, because I still think, every time I play pickleball, I've just gotten two or four people together on the plate and if you've got the money. And I think there's a better chance of doing it next, to, of getting a competitive price next year, I'd move on, other than that, you're letting the opportunity, we're letting the opportunity go.
And that's helpful, that's helpful for me to understand where you, where you wanna go, I wanted to share our, our issues and frustrations and, and to see if that's still a direction and if we're, if we're headed the right way. So anyway, we do have some that would like him, I, I responded to them and kinda said, you know, I helped them to understand what our problem was with the um, I've got a um, I got a petition here, um and, and it goes through lots of different names. Um, but anyway, I responded to kind of the lead and said, hey, we're really looking for bidders and maybe in their group, maybe they have somebody or maybe they have a few that could help us get a few bids for projects. Um, you know, we probably don't have enough money, is it, is it has at this point, we might. But if they wanted to do a fundraising effort, we've seen the benefits of, of a, of a community fundraising effort and, and we have others that want to do that in different things. So I think as we help people build, um build and understand the issue. Um, maybe they can help, I, I, they haven't, they haven't given me a contractor that maybe, maybe there's some of these in this group that have a contractor out there that, that they know that could do this, cause that's what we're looking for, one of our obstacles at this point. So, anyway, tha- that's helpful, I, as I understand you're interested in me going to the county council to, to ask to renew that and to give it another shot for next year and try to get uh maybe some individual ones, uh Meadow Ridge, that would be a good one if they haven't. A- and, and I'm sensing that, that maybe we're in the right direction and, and just cause we're frustrated, doesn't mean it's over, it's I, I've seen some support to continue on, so that's helpful for me, so that's what we're looking for, so. Any opposition to pickleball that you don't want us to just throw up our hat, you, I mean, it'd be easy, just throw up the hands and, and walk away from this one cause there's a lot that's been, um, a, a lot of difficulties have had, cause concrete, I mean, this year, concrete shortages hit us. Um, and we've had issues with that, so anyway, is there anybody that's like, forget the call?
I've never played, I've never played pickleball, I'm gonna have to go check out the parks and play on each court.
I, I have a paddle you can borrow.
He has a.
Can I drink?
Concrete shortage have come from Costco, that X building, everything else has been, I'm like, I'm impressed. I mean, they take concrete every day, basically about all the.
But it's not just here, it's everywhere.
That will end.
So, anyway, that's the, that's really the look of what this agenda item is about, it's not to stir up anything else, it's just to try to help you understand where the staff has been at, why it hasn't been built and what our, what our issues have been, we're aware of mass concerns, we've had those. Um, he shared them before and, and we're happy to hear them again, we've been that route, we, we, this is, this is not what this is about. But, anyway.
Is it different than the email that you sent? Cause we all read it.
Um, I'll point out some things.
I'm gonna give you five, stand up, five minutes.
So, I live, I'm here because I live by the pickleball courts, pickleball seems like, and that's until you live by it, and it's very loud, so it's, I'll take part of it. Five minutes, so that you hear what pickleball sounds like. Did that my back? So anyway, it, it goes on, but we normally wake up listening to pickleball, we eat lunch, listen to pickleball, we eat dinner, listen to pickleball and those. Also, pickleball belongs in a large space on a small space, I've given lots of examples of that. The letter has, I think, twenty-seven different pieces of evidence that pickleball noise is a problem, so please don't put them in a neighborhood park, that would be my first thing. I've been talking to Ryan about this for twenty-seven months now, trying to get there not be four more courts behind my house next building in Hard Park. So apparently, concrete is a shortage, but four pickleball courts can fit inside of one tennis court. We have two tennis courts at Zollinger Park, which is the largest park we have. It's surrounded, it's got hundreds of feet in every direction and the nearest house is protected by a number of trees. So we can fit eight pickleball courts in Zollinger Park, and I spent a lot of time at Lenhard Park and Zollinger Park. So I see a lot of pickleball players and I don't see many tennis players. And normally, as we've said, pickleball players come in groups, players come in pairs normally. But there's not many people using those eight courts, so at a fraction of the cost, we can put eight pickleball courts all together in Zollinger Park, we lose one tennis court, maybe worth the funds, we can put that in the neighborhood park. We solve the noise problem, we solve the pickleball players want their courts together problem, we reduce the cost. It seems like a win-win. In twenty twenty-one, as you said, prices have probably gone up, the cost to resurface one tennis court and converted the pickleball was twenty thousand dollars, and that was by Courts Unlimited based in Salt Lake City. They convert pickleball courts, tennis courts, and another twenty thousand dollars, so unless those prices have gone up, we're looking at sixty thousand dollars for the job. And eight pickleball courts, we have one tennis court and one park. Seems like a great solution, it was brought up last year and, and next last year. I don't know, how many more minutes do I have? Okay, so the park survey, we know I had a number of complaints about pickleball noise, the Parks Commission of twenty twenty identified noise as a high priority issue. And that's why we have some precinct fencing, we've tried quiet balls, which were great. Uh, council members Paulson, Kirk and Seeley came to the courts, talked to people, council member Steph did the same. Terry and Janelle at the meeting said, we realized putting the course, there was a mistake. Josh said, I think it's terrible what the city has done to you, while Brent said over the phone, we really need to quiet things down for you in the park. And one of my favorite things is on April fourteenth, um Ryan forwarded an email to me and two of my neighbors, who were here earlier, but they left. This was a solution to the noise problem by the pickleball players, the city should buy the homeowners earplugs to wear in their homes. So I think that's evidence that we have a problem. Maybe I'll rest my case there, but uh please book a course where they belong, hire someone that knows what they're doing. Big cities, Maricopa County, Berkeley, California, all up and down the east coast, west coast sport, and where they have a lot of these things, I mean, communities. They hire someone, they do a sound study to figure out, is it gonna be a problem or not a problem? So I think we should do the same. Any questions?
I just have one question, um, I know your recommendation is to, I, I understand your recommendation being to convert the tennis courts at Zollinger to pickleballs or at least one of them to set. Um, I'm trying to recall that conversation, cause this is a while ago, what was your recommendation for the pickleball courts that are near your that are near your place, was that to convert them into tennis? And is that, that's feasible? I thought we got some sort of estimate on that or something.
I think the issue too is with the rap spending, it has to be new, it can't be used for conversions, so if we consider doing that, it wouldn't be applicable to these rap funds, is that correct?
That is my understanding, I don't know.
I don't know, that's, you're probably right, I mean.
I haven't seen the rules on it.
But you just reapply, the same way you would reapply, or extend it, waiting for prices to come down.
Any rap funds may require that it be new construction as opposed to.
I know the, I know the impact fees can't be used for uh existing, cause they're um capacity, so a park impact fee wouldn't be able to be used for it. I, I don't know that I've looked for the raps, I don't know.
I, I would question that, because you're talking about, you're talking about capacity, you're talking about capacity, pickleball courts, not of, not of infrastructure. If you were to increase the number of pickleball courts, I don't see why that would be permissible.
Like you'll buy a conversion from, from one sport to the other?
Yeah, because you're saying we have a capacity of pickleball courts and we have four and now we need twelve, so you've increased the capacity of pickleball courts.
Probably needs to be explored with county.
I, I. That's proposal, I, I don't even, I don't know, sports, like I, like, like, clearly, I think it's an option, but um, if, if there was viability of converting one to tennis and one to pickleball and, and it was matter such locations, I don't have any issue with that as long as it as long as the um facilities are sufficient for the people that wanna use them. So I, if raps allowed us to do that, I wouldn't have the objection to that personally.
Any other?
I don't believe I would either, I think that's uh, it's, you know, what people play now, more than, than what we, they did in the past. I, I would say, we ought to look at that, yeah.
I'm also okay with this.
The swap, and, and you say you're a tennis player versus a.
Played tennis twice in my life.
Heard tennis, but he's never played pickleball.
Just converted to a bushler, five minutes.
Yeah, I've never played pickleball, so I'm not even in that category.
I really.
Bring a real. So if it's possible with the funds and swap, like I'm a soccer player, let's just throw that out there.
And I think we have applications to change soccer to lacrosse. Anyway, that's not on the agenda, I'm sorry. What's that?
Suggestion is worth looking at, because it is a noisy, it is a noisy thing.
I'm gonna go play on the court by your house tomorrow. When it's, I'm just kidding, sorry. When's a good time to go try out these courts? No, but I'm, I'm okay.
After breakfast, before lunch, and before dinner.
I'll try that, but.
We appreciate your feedback.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for coming and wa- waiting through all of this. Issues like this need to be explored in it. I'm, I'm always one to look at all options and then make decisions from that, so thank you. Ryan, thanks for your information. I think we can explore some of these other options and come back to the council with some information. Hey. So, um, that being said, we need staff reports. Oh, I'm sorry. You can, you may.
This has, my name's Howard Christian, again, uh, in case you forgot. I'm the chairman of the Providence Historic Preservation Commission and uh whether you're aware or not, we, we've been putting historical markers up around the city. I'd like to see the councils or the city put out more information about those, so we can get more people to, people are looking at them, people are stopping. We've got two at the Cata Corral Park, we got two at the, the Jasewell Park. We got one down at Zollinger Park. We got two there on Center Street Main. And we've got one at the school.
Did they put it back out?
I put it back up, yes. We're in the process of putting one more, oh, we've got two more in the works. We can only do one this year, we'll probably try to do another one next year. But they have to do with the, the farming industry that has since been extinct in Providence. So we're putting up that to talk about the farming and how it had an impact on Providence. The other one we're working on is what we call the Forgotten Fruit Way. And it's all the fruit farms that used to be up on the bench, on the north and south bench. And that whole area, it used to be full of fruit orchards, pears, peaches.
Cherries. I picked cherries.
Cherries, raspberries, strawberries. And uh, we had a university student do her master's thesis to talk about the food industry in Providence, and it's in the book, it's about that thick. Uh, we have a, a code for that, you can go look at that, it's on the USU server.
But we, do we have a link?
Yes, we have. The one at Zollinger Park talks about the railroad that used to run through Providence. Then straight down Second West all the way to higher, the fact it ran all the way around the valley, all the way from Preston, all the way around the valley. That's also got a link that you can go look in more depth of what that was and how it about and the impact that it had on Providence, we, we commissioned a university student in the history department to do that study. And he did an excellent job, if you've never looked at it, I would encourage you to do so. And that's also a link that's on this city's website, that's and, and by the way, we're in the process of, of combining the historic preservation website with the city's website, so there's only one.
Okay.
Be maintained, and so that, that will help a lot, and uh so I just wanted to make you aware of what we, what we've been doing and, and what we are gonna do in the future, so uh thank you for your time.
Thanks, Howard.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, we're drinking different water these days. In that, we have a new reservoir that's online and putting it in the system, so it's been interesting to see how the different courts of our water system, you know, it's, and a big part of my world for seventeen years, and seeing how the water circulates around and with this change, put right into the I guess middle man spot of our water system is kinda interesting to see how it's different, as far as how, how we run the system. I've only got to play with it for a couple of weeks, we've probably got our, our operating permit from state, but it's online and there's only a couple little loose ends as far as tidying up that entire project, which is the gates on the fence and some site stabilization and vegetation, so. So it's great news overall, it's, it's good to see that finally coming to a, to an end as far as the project goes, and it's been great to see see how it's working, so far it's working great, the SCADA system's tied into it really well, and I guess as far as Providence water goes, we're in a lot better shape now than we've been. And I guess as far as Providence water goes, we're in a lot better shape now than we've been in quite a few years because of the water storage and the, the change, the different utilization for lack of a better term.
What about pressure?
The Broad Hollow Spring Water.
That give us more pressure?
It's not different pressure. It's just more storage for zone two, which is the middle man. So you have three primary zones in town. So you've got Eck Tank, which is zone one. Everything feeds below it. You've got Reds and Dew, which are connected as one based on elevation, even though they're quite a ways apart from each other. They're, they work as one through physics and everybody's got your gravity out of those in the zone two, which is the middle, middle area, middle benches. And then we've got the High Bench, which pretty much is Sherwood and Highlands area, more or less. And so that's zone three. And there's a few sub-small zones, but we have three main zones in Providence. It's, it's working quite well and we're in pretty good shape for at least a few more years to come. And we've got to work on another well for different reasons for our next capital project. But all's, all's looking quite well in the water world.
We like that. We need water.
Rob, where do we chlorinate? I know we chlorinated Canyon, we chlorinated Reds. Where else do we chlorinate?
So Coe, Coe Reservoir is where we chlorinate the spring water. And J's Well is where we chlorinate all the well water because our, our two main wells are connected together in a, in a transmission line. So they don't go directly to the distribution system.
Okay.
And so they, they both feed through a single line to Eck Tank.
Okay.
Where they mix. And so, so we run J's Well a lot more than Dale's. We don't run Dale's solo, so to speak. We mix them, mix it with J's Chlorination.
So then it's lifted from there up to Reds from Eck Tank.
Right. So when we run the, run the summer demands, we do pump water and more or less circulate the system in a little bit different way from season to season. But we do boost the well water, which ultimately goes to Eck. We boost it to Reds and Dew now. And that those boosters will send it to both tanks simultaneously, or it can dictate which it goes to or how much. And then once it gets to Red, we can boost from Canyon Booster, which is that little building right, right off the asphalt at the air fence. Those boosters can boost it back up the canyon to Coes. And so we have quite the, the ability to circulate the water that way.
And normal operating status, the, the Reds Tank, you know, it's called what the, the new one?
Dew.
Dew, the Dew Tank, do they all simultaneously normally? I know you can isolate them.
Right. But they'll both be open and feeding zone two's distribution simultaneously. So.
Can I just say, we appreciate the work you do.
Thanks. I enjoy the worst. And, and.
Your eyes light up when people.
It's, it's, it's been great to see, you know, the achievements that so many have made in regards to utilizing Broad Hollow's rights and, and water ultimately, because it's, it's definitely made a big difference this year. On different notes, there's probably not a whole lot to report on the cemetery. Building should start going vertical really, really soon. So I think we'll, we'll beat the winter storms. Fiber, Ryan might want to touch on fiber, but you'll probably start seeing fiber heading south on the north banks, the south side of the north bench. So that's a way to put it. So Abbey and Stonehenge will start seeing that.
Say east.
I knew you were going to say that. But Kerry, the Highlands, it'll end up in Kerry and Josh's neighborhood real soon. So.
Gets noisy out there.
It's, there's a little extra work going on lately when it comes to the amount of labors they've got out there. Not necessarily crews, but they've added some personnel. So it's going a little bit more efficient, efficient lately. So.
You would like to know, I drove past today and someone had their measuring tape out, making sure it was deep enough. I was a little.
Neighbors?
No, no, one of the workers was just checking.
There has been some quality.
She saw me and didn't recognize me.
It was not, you know, some guy out there working, got his measuring tape.
That's very important and there has been a few quality issues when it comes to keep competitive on some different aspects of this project. But we're trying to keep a handle on the biggest parts of those quality issues.
How's 100 South?
10 South, 100 South. The project, yes. It's, it's coming along. I think, I think they're more behind schedule than they'll lead on. But I think we'll really get asphalt down before, before it's, you know, frozen wasteland. So. I think we'll get it buttoned up before winter hits. So we're all right. Even though I think our plan was tentatively to be asphalted by the end of this month, but they're not going to make that.
They haven't said they won't make it.
They haven't said so, but they're, they've got a lot to do still.
Why admit defeat?
They started laying roadways today.
I like it when they under promise and over deliver.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you for all the things you do to keep our lives running.
Hey, got it?
I don't have very much. I do want to thank you for the time that you put in on that code and for passing it. And we will start making changes to it in the very near future. So we're working on some of those things and they'll come to be. Just the great big development that wanted to, upon the southeast edge of the city, the Providence Highlands area, they put their project on hold. So they were, as a co-property, yes, with, we've received an email from them. One of their investors is a little bit nervous with some of the, the changes in, in the economy right now. And so they've put that on hold. So that is on the quiet front for right now. Um, we received an application for a municipal boundary adjustment with Millville City down on the southwest side of town. And I believe Millville will be talking about that tomorrow night. We'll wait and see what they do before we.
I was thinking it was tonight.
Oh, did they make the same night? We do, for some reason I thought they met on Thursdays, but it may very well be tonight.
It's south of the 1700, south, it's south, south of there. We've annexed some of it and then there's more.
That, that piece of county was over there, is that?
No, it's, it's off of the high, it's west of the, there's the.
West of the river.
West of the highway, west of, west of, west of where next, or I mean, the Blackstone.
Yeah, I'm with you.
West of that. So as soon as that, we'll, we'll see what, what Milton does will be good neighbors on that. But I, if you see it on the agenda, yes, there has been an, an application come in and we'll see how that pans out. We are getting quite a bit of interest in commercial businesses along that highway. And we've met with UDOT quite a few times over the last four or five weeks on access management points between 300 South, which is 1700 South for the county address, and then our 500 South, which doesn't exist at the highway yet, but we've made that very clear to UDOT that we want that access, we want it preserved. And so we've actually worked with the property owners have actually been really good about it. They work with UDOT and we feel like we've got spacing down between 300 South and the future 500 South that will preserve 500 South and then that will also allow for T-type intersections with commercial access on either side of the road. There won't be full-blown city intersections, but T-type commercial driveways coming off in, in a T instead of offsets. So we're working with that. We do have quite a bit of interest from different, whether they come to play or not, I don't know. But we're getting a lot of commercial interest along that highway. So that's good for us. So we got the flag football kids out having fun right now. We're working on the car show and bless Utah State's heart. They decided that car shows were so fun, they would have their homecoming on that same day. So they don't have anybody as good as Shania. No, they don't. Or the band, the Novo, which is Chad Woolley and Tracy Carroll. The, it's their band and they come and play for several years for us and the car show people like them and they're coming back. And so, so the car show will be October 8th from 10 to 2, but I still, I hope it's a good weather day because if it is, the car show people will still be real supportive and come and have a lot of fun. So. And then of course, the next thing that we're looking at after that will be December 1st, which will be the annual tree lighting. So that'll be, start, we're starting on that as well. So that'll be fun. And then as far as code compliance goes, we are working really hard trying to get people to stay compliant with their retaining walls and their vehicles that are parked on the right of way. The only great thing about winter parking hours is that the vehicles are, everybody understands and they put all their big summer RVs and things away for the winter and, and we don't have to fight that fight. But, but right now we're still working on it. And Colton's doing a, a really good job of getting out there and talking with people trying to, to keep them in line code compliance wise. So, so it's busy that way. But anyway, thank you for your service and all you do. Is there any questions or anything that anybody has?
No, but a big thank you for all this stuff. This land use and all of the codes and things that go along with that is, is so technical and, and so important to have somebody on top of it. Thank you.
Well, thank you. It's, you, the mayor sent me a text or an email to Ryan and I asking what we thought she could do with the state legislatures on land use. I wish they would just stay out of this. And let the cities do what they need to do, but we will continue to obey those.
Trying to get on that board so that I can watch a little. When was the last time they did it, I wonder?
I don't know, but they, they're, they're, it's a trick. It's a word search to go through their code. So anyway, but thanks again for all you do.
Thank you. Okay. Hi.
Thank you for approving the code. I'll get those changes made. It probably won't be till next week because I'm at a conference. Did you guys come across anything else over the weekend? If you have the desire to reread that, capitalizations, those kinds of things, no takeaways, no strike throughs. I'll get that ordinance signed by the mayor, get that to Civic Plus. And hopefully they'll make it go live within the next week or two. You guys can see that on our website. Again, it should have the state links and that'll be really nice.
Are we making bets on how many pages shorter it will be?
No. 359 to 358.
They'll just put the placeholders in that state reserved.
Jeff mentioned that Vineyard was on last week. So the annexation public there will be on next month and up till before you guys. Hopefully everything goes smoothly. We can get that approved and get to that done. That's all I have so far. Any questions?
Do we do, so they've done before where they've done the annexation and the zone assignment together?
That's how the ordinance will read right now.
Okay. So I just didn't know if it was. You had to handle as two things or if they were going to get the zone, anyway, they're separating here.
Well, the one we did with Alder, we did as one. Again, Jeff mentioned they kind of did a weird motion where they asked you guys to kind of do some kind of agreement to binding them to the 74 houses that they showed during the city's celebration.
There's so many suggestions for that.
But yeah, I still, we're getting counts involved. So we'll see how that goes, but hopefully it will be one ordinance. And I'll get that to the governor's office, we'll get that approved, recorded and we can start.
Just adopt it.
Yeah. If that's what you want. If that's what you want.
I, I thought the, the planning commission did a, a nice job and they, it was a very constructive.
Yeah. If you've been following it compared to the last couple, it was very, very good on that. Compared to the last one, everyone was up in arms. I think Vineyard's been a great.
And only two Providence residents, really.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Anything else?
Thank you for your work. That codification was a lot of work. Okay. Ryan.
I can do this two ways. One, I can say I have a great staff and they've done a great job of summarizing if you have any questions. Otherwise.
Better do it the other way.
All right. Otherwise, you've got to, if you look back and, and sometimes I like to reflect and, and we've got a little time. So not pushed on the nine. But I just kind of have you look back over some of the things that we've accomplished over the last two and a half years and the, the magnitude of which has been accomplished. And I, and I, as I went through to try to prep, that is something I think that, that we don't spend enough time maybe looking back and saying, where have we been and where did we get here? The codification first time in 30 years is a, is a big deal and to accomplish that, the, the council should be extremely pleased in the work you put in. It's been a lot of work from the staff, but I know that that's a lot of work from the council and you should be pleased in getting that accomplished. That is, that is a, is a huge accomplishment. And while we say that it should get done every 10 years and it, it should, the number of cities that probably haven't are great. And, and to be able to get that accomplished is, is enormous. We have completed master plans that hadn't been done for over 20 years. The water, the sewer now, some modifications to keep up, but, but full depth. We've done water, sewer, transportation, the first park control and recreation, the general plan. We have some of the, the, now, not always every individual street, but we have a by, by and large increased the quality of our roads tremendously over the last two and a half years. And, and to some of Rob's, you're going to have cutting them up. We are committed to making sure that they will be great afterward as well. But we have some of the best roads we've ever had. We, we, we sit down and we look at which roads we're going to work on. We sat down with Questar Gas and our, our gas lines are in as good a shape as they can be for our city. And we're happy about that. And that's not something we've necessarily done, but, but it gives us comfort when we're going to, to do projects over top of, of that infrastructure. We've mapped a huge volume of data over the last couple of years. And the, and the volume of that data that we have brought in-house and mapped is, is tremendous. And some things that you don't necessarily see. We've chipped, sealed and covered a huge number of roads this year and the last few years. And we've completed the cemetery. At this point, we've come to a precipice, Cliff, but we, we summoned. But we have completed the build out of the cemetery. It has been 150 years in the making. We've updated water lines and, and a number of water services. We have, we have our water system in as good a shape as we've probably ever had it in. One thing Rob didn't tell you that he's been working on. And sometimes they sit still by thunder and sometimes they leave me a little gems to share. And sometimes they sit still by thunder and sometimes they leave me a little um, gems to share. Um, but the pressure reducing valves, uh, we've gone through and redone. Um, and his crew, uh, the water department has done an amazing job uh, with with the. A contractor and we've redone a lot of those. A lot of times they don't get redone and don't have the attention. And they came and said, let's, let's work on getting this project. Um, which makes it so that those run as good as, almost, almost as good as new. Um, nothing's ever quite as good as new. We've had the most number of grants in the last uh, couple of years as we've had in decades. Um, we've improved our fleet, our our fleet when I got here was averaged over fifteen years old. We've replaced several of the equipment, have some more on order. It's amazing at what a a good fleet accomplishes both for for a staff. Uh, for the work they do and having the right tools for the right job. We're, we've embarked on a fiber project and although we complain and 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 regret that it may not be as as. Uh, on track or there's might be delays. You gotta keep in mind that this is the largest project that the city's undertaken probably since the sewer system. We have, uh, we've increased probably uh, the size of our parks, uh, the most, the largest increase in their size of a park since. I think we acquired Zollinger Park originally, which is over twenty years. I don't know how long that actually is, but. We've used uh, the most amount of Broad Hollow water and and have. Have been able to use that to the benefit of the water system. Um, Brent touched on it a little. But it is something that shouldn't be minimized. This is, this is a huge volume of water that. That we are now putting to beneficial use. Uh, we protect it against the um. Re-adjudication of the state. The shareholders, we haven't as a, as a water company, we hadn't seen, I don't know that we'd seen any complaints from, come in from, from that. Uh, change. Um, we're able to use as much as a, as a. Um, almost as much as a well, if not more, and and kind of keep uh, our well system uh, operating. Or efficiently and and give them time, a little time to rest. And although we need to drill another well, we need to do lots of things. You know, we, we have some amazing things going on. We currently have no litigation. At this point in our, in our city, we have zero litigation either for us or against us uh, that we're pursuing. Um, which I think is a great thing for our city, um, to be able to be in. Um, and. We're in the third year of attack of our property tax reduction, so we had the largest property tax increase and we've. Three times been able to to bring that down, so that we're, we're a lower rate today than we were. Uh, when we had that property tax increase for the fire. Um, and I could go on, but I think the volume, sometimes we don't spend the time to re, to look back in the mirror. And say, what amazing things we've accomplished in what we've done done. Um, so anyway, that would be my report is kind of looking back. Um, recalls you've set, lots of those have accomplished and and we've worked on a lot of that, a lot of those items. And anyway, I I think that as a, as a city, we are in as good a position as we've probably ever been in. If there's another time, I don't know that, um, but we should be proud of that and and the staff, I think we are. So anyway, that's my report back to you. I know that popping is from the staff themselves, so.
I'd like, just one comment if I could really quickly. I am so pleased with what these leaders have done, along with you, irrigation company. Because I used to watch that water come and pass me and think that is precious. It needs to be utilized by the city as well as the irrigators. But before our mayor and I could never come to grips to be able to settle that issue. And when we got the two of us out of the way, it got done and we appreciate help very much.
Well, everything runs smoother when there's collaboration and participation by everyone.
And stepping out.
But some, some of that too. But, you know, Ryan, you're being able to come on board and add all that extra help that we needed to make that. These things happen. You know, as we look at the numbers of grants that that we've been able to get as a city. And the amount that we've been able to save tax dollars because we've gotten grants. And grants are not, they're not easy to get, they're not easy to manage and to report on. Appreciate the skills that you have in the numbers area. In the Excel spreadsheets that you're able to produce that that help us make sure that we are. Fulfilling what we promised that we would when we get grants. So, um. I had one question as you were talking about the water. Remember the the Spring Creek users that had not been able to use their water and we did an exchange with them. Do you have any report on how that went?
I'm not sure we will have used, well, we will have used the most that we've ever used. I don't know that we would have gotten to that point yet. Um, and we will, we'll do our evaluation. Once the season's over, we'll look back and evaluate that. But at this point, I don't really, we've. Not that far, but I think it is something we're certainly working towards. I think it'll be a great thing for the future, but that's a good spot for us to to look forward to, because there's a lot more like that.
Certainly. We appreciate all of your good efforts. Uh, I know it comes with good staff as well. And you've been able to select people and manage them and and help them grow and. Accomplish things that you've done, so, thank you.
I like to wave to all them. They don't really know who I am when I'm waving at them when they're out doing their stuff. I'm very proud of them.
If you'll make sure you wave with all five fingers, it helps to 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 separate the council.
Wave.
Council from some of the public that are only one fingered. And then maybe that's because they don't have them. I don't want to, I'm talking about.
But the other thing that I I would like to do is to publish that list. I know we put stories here and there about all the different things, but I I think the the public in Providence. Deserves to see that at the water.
We have a new water tank. We, we, we have a budget model that's been, uh, anyway, we have a lot of things.
Well, we get awards for our budget model.
I, I think the idea is to make sure that we look back and evaluate. How much we've accomplished in what we've, where we're headed and and we have more to go and. You know, we have, we have other things that are going to take it and and uh, I think it's always good to look back to. To make sure we've seen what we've got done.
I, I often, I think that people often don't recognize the good and the progress unless it's pointed out. And so I totally agree with you Kathleen and I, I, it, there's no way to do an exhaustive list, but I think some of the awards and the. Grants should be added to that list when it's published. The, it just doesn't hurt to tell people and they might say, well, I know, I, I know, but. I, I don't think they know. And we have a number of people that come to the council and and talk about. Things that they don't like about what we do. And we've had people tell us that they don't trust us and and I have a hard time realizing where that comes from. But I think it's to our benefit to continue to give information to them so that they know what's going on and what we're doing. Nicole is raising her hand. You have to come to the mic and say who you are.
What up is that I, we also received a five, thanks to Ryan, a five thousand dollar grant. For Providence City Sour Croppies, so thank you. And that should be sent to when we do the sour croppies. But back in, um, when Mayor Alder was just put in, I had suggested. That we do a happy things happening around the city, or I don't call it that, but something in the city newsletter every month. That's positive. And when. Bye, got up, it reminded me that I've taken a few pictures of him actually putting up in like. I got one right here, in the early spring of him putting up these awesome plaques.
So we can add that to the.
Yes, along with, you know, how he said that he would love more knowledge about the eight plaques that are put up. We could include a picture of Awesome Howard putting them up earlier in the spring. Again, I have lots of. Bringing them up. So just a suggestion that we could put happy things around the, people like that kind of stuff.
They do. And I think our, I think our newsletter has been reflecting that.
Oh, absolutely.
We had lots of positive things, so.
And the two, just down to one each. But yeah, I just thought I would include how great that is, this committee. So I think it would be fun to include it and on and. Plus those on the city newsletter so people go around.
Well, we are what we are today, what our ancestors were, were hoping that we would come to. That's why they sacrificed them. Thank you. We like to hear good things. Um, it's like when people stand up to complain, I say we also take. Good things.
The knowledge that you guys have and bring is.
Well, it's a great team. And it's, it's working very well. Okay, well, we'll take more good comments if anybody wants to give them, but. Ryan, thank you for your report. And we, we don't need an executive session, do we? Okay, so with that, I'll enter data motion. I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting twenty seconds after nine second.